And mute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. This time we'll call the meeting to order. We have three presentations on the agenda. The first is administrative rulemaking authority. I'd like to invite Robert Sheasley, the city attorney, to please make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is the the first presentation tonight is a relatively straightforward one. Dylan, would you mind bringing up the very brief presentation? The genesis for this was primarily originated with creating civic center access rules. And then in reviewing a number of park policies and recreation center policies and how we go about creating administrative rules, let's go to the first slide, the first and only slide. So the purpose of the ordinance is to create clear authority for the city manager to issue rules for operational administrative items that and specified in the ordinance are matters where the city manager has specific authority for the use and operation of city property and then for operation of city programs and services. The hope is to create consistency so we have the same types of rules for the same activities and a level of formality to them so that we make sure that these go through a proper approval process and have legal review. It is a power that I believe is implicit with the city manager. But to make this explicitly clear, I believe having the simple ordinance would benefit the city's operations, especially going forward as we grow, would not affect council's authority. The another example is under the current, the pending draft of the oil and gas regulations includes financial assurance language that has an administrative regulation delegated to the city manager. And so although that's delegated there, this is buttresses that authority. And we would hope that this would be a central part of any city manager's authority anywhere. So it's pretty simple. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone on council have any questions for the city attorney? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. So I'm just, I'm still a little curious if it's implicit in the city manager's responsibilities. I'm not understanding why it takes the form of an ordinance.
So when something's implicit, I think it's subject to challenge more and it leads to a question as to who can make a certain rule there. And this is to make sure that that is vested in the city manager. It's a power that obviously can be delegated. There's also not any standardization throughout the city on these kind of public facing policies. We have internal policy standardization. But given that there's been a long history in the city of creation of rules and some haphazardly and some not haphazardly, it creates consistency is the intent.
So are you saying that others in the city might make rules that the city manager might not be aware of? I'm not sure I see where the problems have been.
So let me take, for example, and I don't know that this is a specific problem, trying to get ahead of a problem. For there is a misdemeanor in the city for failing to follow rules on public property, including park property. Those have to be clearly posted, yet there's nowhere explicitly that says where the authority to create those rules lies. And so this is a thing that I noticed during the pandemic and throughout the summer, looking at rulemaking issues and have noticed that other cities have this and believe it would be good for us to have.
Okay, that makes that makes more sense to me than looks strange to be receiving it, to be honest. Thank you.
Does anyone else, does anyone else on council have any questions for Mr. Sheasley? Saying none, would like to thank you for the quick presentation and for the information. And we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the traffic calming policy. Would like to invite Brett Sotterlin, city engineer, to make the presentation.
Dylan, oh, yeah, Michael Rank is also on, okay. Good evening, honorable mayor and members in city council. Tonight I'll be presenting the traffic common policy. I will also have Michael Rank with me. He's our city traffic engineer. He's been with the city just almost six months, so he's new to us, so he'll be helping me out. Dylan, can you pull up the presentation, please? Thank you. Can you go to the next slide, please? So as an overview, we'll be going over the purpose and need, overview of the policy, little history and background, guidelines, procedures, implementation levels, and then a little definition on what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is, and then implementing engineering solutions. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to review the existing traffic calming policy. And the need is to inform city council on how speeding concerns are addressed within the city. Next slide, please. The purpose of the traffic common policy is to create a uniform set of guidelines for how we address traffic calming throughout the city and traffic comment concerns that are raised by our customers. Traffic comming conclude reducing speed of motorists, hopefully increasing safety and reducing traffic accidents. Next slide, please. So just a little history, the traffic calling policy was first developed and adopted back in nineteen ninety-nine, and then it was last updated December of twenty fourteen. So just a brief overview of what we've done in twenty twenty. So we've actually had sixty-two CRMs regarding speeding this year. And of those sixty-two, only two qualified under method three for physical traffic calming. So the majority of those fell under method one, which is about seventy-five percent of them, and then method two, about twenty-two percent. And then, as I said, method three, we had two that actually fell under a physical traffic calming. Usually takes one to two months to process method one and two requests, three to four months to process method three requests. I will say that method three probably took a little bit longer this year just because of the public outreach component and the COVID restrictions that we had to deal with this year. Next slide, please. So we use three methods under the current policy to address traffic calming. The first is the education of the public, including drivers and residents. The second is basically enforcing traffic regulations and laws. And then the third would be the installation of physical devices to try to change driver behavior. Next slide, please. So Public Works receives traffic commenting requests from citizens, the PD and city council. And then we coordinate Public Works with the police department to collect speed data and determine the severity of the issue. Speed data is collected by the PD and we usually run a five-day duration speed study. And then we evaluate the speed study and we determine what level of traffic calming is implemented per our current policy. Next slide, please. So implementation levels, we have three levels as defined by the policy and it's based upon the eighty-fifth percentile speed. Now, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is a speed at or below which eighty-five percent of drivers operate their vehicles under favorable conditions. So the eighty-fifth percentile speed is the level that drivers feel comfortable driving on a roadway based upon how they feel. And there's usually some visual aspects to that on how that affects how they drive. So it could be if they, if it has big wide shoulders, that makes you feel more comfortable driving faster. If you have vertical and horizontal curves, depending on the severity of those, that could slow you down. If you have a number of sight distance obstructions, that would slow you down. And then the presence of how the neighborhoods developed around the roadway. So if you have buildings and cars that are along the street, that creates something we call a visual friction, which helps to slow down cars. So are there any questions about the eighty-fifth percentile speed? I know that that's a kind of a unique term within the traffic engineering community. I guess, if not, next slide, please. So under the traffic calming policy, level one is when the eighty-fifth percentile speed is less than four miles an hour over the posted speed limit. So under the current policy, that does not warrant any traffic calming. So we do review the integrity of the data. And if the request are asked, we will share the speed study results with them. And then if desired, the quester can make another request for another speed study six months after the initial study. Next slide, please. Level two, under the traffic calming policy, is when the eighty-fifth percentile speed is between four and seven miles an hour over the posted speed limit. And we use education and enforcement to address the speeding issues under level two. And so we would review the existing signage within the roadway. We may ask the police department to do some directed patrol within the neighborhood. And we may place radar signs within the neighborhood to educate the public on how fast they're going. And then other public outreach methods could be considered such as a flyer, maybe posting on social media. Next slide, please. So level three, under the traffic calming policy, is when the eighty-fifth percentile speed is greater than seven miles an hour over the posted speed limit. Excuse me. So we'd use a combination of education enforcement and then physical traffic calming devices to address the issue. Again, we review the existing signage. We may ask for directed patrol by the police department. We may place speed radar signs with the neighborhood. The other component of the level three is that we would do a public outreach within the neighborhood and basically ask them what type of traffic calming device they would prefer within their neighborhood. Next slide, please. So when we are implementing an engineered solution, as I said before, we do have public outreach with the affected neighborhood. This year, or twenty twenty was a little unique. We tried a couple different methods. We sent letters to everybody in the neighborhood. We even put a petition through the HOA website with a little bit of varied success. I think it'd be much more effective once we're able to actually meet with the public. So in a normal year, we would have a petition that we would circulate within the neighborhood. And as a part of that petition, all properties immediately adjacent to the device must be in favor of it. And then we also run our proposed solution by the police department, our street maintenance division, the fire district, and then the affected school. So we want each of those entities to evaluate what we're doing to just to make sure that we're not negatively affecting their operations. And then the next step is really determining the source of funding and then designing the traffic calming device and then constructing it. And currently, there is a CIPP budget to do traffic calming projects. So it hasn't been an issue in the in the recent past to be able to put in any devices. And that's the end of the presentation I have. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I missed a few of your slides, but I, one question I have, I'm curious, what is used to collect and determine the data? Like, is it a machine or how do, what she used to collect the data?
Michael, can you fill that question for me, please?
Yeah, the, the police department uses a device called the jammer radar unit. And it's a low-profile device that they put out on the street typically for five days. And it's continuously collecting speed data for every vehicle that proceeds past the unit.
All right, thank you. And then I'm curious, some like on corner lots, I know several in particular going from East Sixtieth Avenue from Quebec to Vasquez. Several corner lots had their fences damaged, stuff like that from speeding. So after forty-eight hour report and the speeding continues, nothing seems to change. So what's the next steps and processes like that? Because it seems like a continuous problem on East Sixtieth Avenue. Does the data take into consideration like property damages as well?
I would say that our current policy is just based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So the current policy does not consider accidents or property damage in the implementation of any kind of devices.
And does it matter too, since in the core of the city, we don't have HOAs? Is the collection of data done the same?
Yeah, the collection of data is done exactly the same in the core part of the city and in the northern part of the city.
And then I was going back to slide five. I meant to ask that when you were there after the first part of the questions, but you said sixty percent concerns, but only two requests qualified for the physical traffic calming method.
Sorry. Yeah, just to clarify, so we had sixty-two CRMs, which and CRMs is the system that we use to collect citizen complaints or requests. We had sixty-two requests for speeding complaints within the city last year.
So for those listening in, can you tell us what CRM stands for?
I'm actually not sure what CRM stands for. It's probably like citizen request something. I don't know if anybody has any background of what CRM stands for.
Yeah, well, it's just helpful in the future, like abbreviations, especially those listening that we know what abbreviations are. Okay, and so, and do you have a breakdown by ward? Is that available? Like if the mayor or another fellow council member requests that?
We could break it down by ward. Each location is usually listed by an address. So we could, if, if required, we could probably come up with that report. Yes.
And so if possible, I mean, like if the mayor or a council person requests that, that is possible to have that?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, great, okay. And then I noticed in this report also, and I brought it up several times that I think would help the speeding in the city. I'm not a specialist or anything, but there's no reports I had questioned, can staff look into getting those reflector stop signs? And in particularly, like on Olive and Sixty, Sixtieth Avenue and Monaco and East Sixty-Ninth Avenue, that recently became a four-way stop. Where it used to just be a two-way stop, so a lot of cars keep zooming through that. So do you have any updates on those reflector stop signs being installed throughout all of Commerce City?
Michael, do you have any background on that? Could you take that question, please?
Yeah, we can, we can look into that farther as far as, you know, whether these are the flashing LEDs or another option is to install reflectorized strips up the post of the stop sign that would certainly help with the visibility of the stop sign, especially at night. Those, those are both options we can look into farther.
Okay, thank you, yeah, because I would appreciate if you can bring that forward to the mayor and the other city council as soon as you can, because I mentioned this about three times and I've seen them in other cities and especially with the LED reflectors and plus their power from what I said powered by solar, the ones I've seen. So I think it would be real helpful, especially talking to a lot of residents. And then I know a lot of people live in those areas and they've expressed concerns to me. So if he, if staff can look into that sooner than later, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So one note, councilmember Alan Thomas, we did investigate a couple of those intersections you mentioned, and we don't have any traffic accidents that show that folks are actually running through those intersections. So that that's one of the reasons we haven't actually pursued the LED stop signs is that we don't have the actual data showing that it.
You might wanna, yeah, might wanna double research that, because I know several on Monaco and East Sixty-Ninth Avenue. And then I know a few, quite a few residents that live right there on Olive and Sixty Second. And one is actually a Adams County sheriff as well and other residents around that area. And they constantly see residents not stopping at that stop sign. So there's a potential also for accidents. So I'm trying to prevent that as well.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
My apologies, councilmember Alan Thomas, this is Joe Wilson. If I could just add a little bit more context, this, when, when accidents occur and it generates a request for us to look at whether there's traffic coming or traffic measures that we need to take, we do investigate all the traffic, any traffic accident reports in those areas. So for example, you know, whatever determination that the police department makes with respect to the cause of the accidents, we use that as opposed to maybe just general public opinion as to what somebody may have thought they had seen or, or what they've seen relationally to that intersection. For example, if, if a, if a corner lot, if there's damage to a fence, we base our, our measures on what in part the police report suggests as the cause for the accidents as well. So they may or may not be the cause determined that it was speeding, for example, or somebody running through a stop sign. We've had some accidents that occurred that that was not the determinant, if you will, for why the accident occurred. And so, so all those go into that mix, if you will, and we determine what may be the most appropriate solutions to make any intersection or any road safer. With respect to the devices that the police department uses, they've gone into more and more low-profile devices so that it's more transparent to the motorists, i.e. they generally don't know that there's a speed study being conducted. In the past, when the, when the devices were more obvious, then people could manipulate their speeds accordingly as opposed to what their desired effects were. And we try to keep it from the public when the actual timing of when we're doing the speed studies, because on occasion, people try to game the system. For example, in one, in one situation, we had a scenario where word got out that we were doing a speed study and then across social media, there were people suggesting to their neighbors that they increase their speed to kind of influence the results. So, so we try to keep that kind of on the QT if we can, in terms of when we're actually doing that study. And then we also make sure we try to do it over a five-day period that encompasses all the, the general conditions that we're going to experience on those segments of the road.
Yes, thank you. But like I said, I, I'm hoping the goal is to prevent accidents as well. So I just hope staff can look in, especially to those LED stop signs. And if a resident is, some of them live there over thirty years. And even just when I've even been driving by certain locations, I do see cars just zooming through stop signs, et cetera. So I'm just appreciative staff could alert us what to update is looking into those throughout the whole, the whole, the whole city. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, will do. Thank you.
Councilmember Alan Thomas, thank you for bringing up the LED stop signs. That's an item that I actually brought up a year ago. If you look in your council, council action report, you'll see that it was swiftly closed out by Public Works. Studies on the safety effects of LEDs embedded in stop signs conducted by the Texas Transportation Institute in two thousand and four found a twenty-eight point nine percent reduction in the number of vehicles not fully stopping and a fifty-two point nine percent reduction in the number of vehicles moving through the intersection without significantly slowing. A similar study conducted by the Virginia Transportation Research Council in two thousand and seven found a statistically significant decrease in vehicle approach speeds ranging from one point nine to three point four miles per hour with an average of two point seven miles per hour, a seven percent decrease indicating that LED stop signs positively affected driver behavior. Speed decreases tended to be greater during the night than during the day. So it's disappointing that we're waiting for an accident to happen before we implement a safety measure that could be the difference between an accident that occurs and takes the life of another individual or people just going in about their daily way. So I'd like to see this pursuit again. I think it's definitely something at the cost of them. It's only about sixteen hundred dollars for the installation of it. Compare that to the cost of a regular one. If that saves even one life, isn't it worth it? I would think so. Next up is councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. Yes, that sounds like a great idea. First of all, I do want to thank all of you for doing so many of the projects that came forward regarding areas that needed looking at for speeding and signs and, and that kind of thing. So I appreciate that. I am curious, though, about the fact that the last time that there was an update was in twenty fourteen. And when you plan to do another update, given the change in traffic patterns and the growth of the city?
Yeah, I mean, we could look at updating the current policy. We've just been operating under the, the current traffic policy. It's basically been the same since the two thousand, so we could take the opportunity to look further into the policy if you would like.
What are the two streets that you have for traffic calming?
One hundred and nineteenth avenue, just east of Chambers Road. And then we have Fairfax Drive south of Seventy Second Avenue.
Okay, thank you very much. And when you're talking about CRMs, what is, what's the best way to get something accomplished? Is it for a constituent, a resident of Commerce City to send in a complaint about speeding? Or is it best to come through one of the council people?
So we, we actually treat all the requests equally. So if we get a request from the city council member, we'll put it into our CRM system because that's how we track it in Public Works. So all of those requests end up into our CRM system. We investigated them all per the policy right now.
Okay, great. And which one? How do we know which ones are under study? I don't think, we get a regular report updating us on council requests and that kind of thing. But how do we know which roads you're looking at, what streets you're looking at regarding speeding and so forth? I get complaints in this area and I'm sure other council members who live in the area who, you know, represent all of Commerce City will get the same complaints. But we don't know, I don't know which ones are being looked at and which ones aren't.
Yeah, I believe that currently we don't run a report for city council, that, that is something that the CRM system could do. We could run a report showing you what streets we're looking at.
Oh, that would be really terrific. I would love to see a report like that. If you can make that possible, even monthly would be helpful, then we can let constituents know, because sometimes they don't even say it to us directly. They just post it up on social media and then we can let them know that the city is already taking a look at it. That kind of thing would be really useful. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, thanks, guys, for all this work also. I just wanted to echo my same question. If we could get a report, because we always see it on social media, Holly in the poor city is, you know, a racing track. I see that one a lot. But if we could have some data and saying, hey, we're looking at this, so we could let them know. And then another thing, I think what you presented, if there's any way we could put some color in it, some, something that we could also send out, because I don't think our residents understand sometimes what we're looking at, what it takes to change or the process of it. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Yes, council, councilman Maggiola, would you like us to, I guess, educate the public on how to use the CRM system and then also share the traffic calming policy? Is that what you're?
Yeah, this would, yeah, that would be. This would, yeah, that would be great, um, because, you know, like Councilmember Alan Thomas, uh, my mother-in-law lives on Olive and. There's two speed bumps there, that doesn't stop people sometimes, I mean, they just zoom down, um, so if we could, so neighbors could use it. And then the education piece of what it takes to get flashing lights or a speed bump, um. So many times residents like, why can't we just put a speed bump, why can't we just put a speed bump, um, so that, that definitely, I think there's a. Some, uh, some, it could really help educating our residents about this whole process. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I'll be quick because a lot of what was already said is kind of directions I was going, um. You know, we talked about getting a videographer and it's kind of important even through the pandemic and some of those struggles, I think. This is kind of a topic that I, that I envisioned that we can go over, you know, hey, you see your. You feel like there's a lot of speeding in your neighborhood, you know, here's a process to take, move it forward, here's our current policy that we judge this on. And it's three to five minute video and we can get good message messaging out. If anything else, that can calm some frustrations, um, and I think that's what we're, what you're hearing out of all of us is that this is a hot topic issue. Similar to parking and everything else that without good back and forth communication, it just adds. Like animosity and then it just becomes, you know, one of those issues and so, um. You know, working in kind of the transportation environment on daily basis, I understand this is not easy, you know, understanding different. Traffic types, different, um, you know, modes of operation, some of it's, you know, commercial, some of it's just. Uh, day-to-day life, all of that can play into, into account in all this and, and the decisions that we make, so I understand that it's not easy. But I too would be, uh, you know, interested in seeing if there's anything that needed to be updated, highlighting something that if you guys just took a, a staff review of it. Of something that may be outdated, if you guys could suggest. Areas that, that may be considered for improvement, I'd appreciate that and that might, that might, um, open our eyes to if we need to do a full. You know, reanalysis of this thing or just a couple of quick fixes to update it to the times and. And, um, give you guys a better ability to assess the situation, maybe considering crash data, is it a hot, is it a hot area? Um, outside of just, you know, uh, the policy that's today, there's maybe some other data that can feed into your decision-making processes, so. Uh, I appreciate you guys' work on this, uh, hopefully we can fine tune it and continue to make it better.
Thank you, sir, uh, so CRM stands for Customer Relationship Management. And people can download, uh, an app to. Put on their, uh, smartphone and it's called Go Request. And when you take a picture at an intersection, for an example, uh, it, it enters all of the information in terms of. Uh, where it is, the location, so that's a handy app for citizens to have, thank you.
Thanks, sir, that is a great app and, uh, it's also beyond just traffic, there's other things that you can report in there. Uh, Councilmember Alan Thomas, you have additional comments?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Roger, I was gonna ask, it's someone at city staff, explain what that abbreviation is, but I was curious, um. Like Councilmember, uh, Hurst mentioned and others, how old is the CRM system?
I guess, Roger, you have any background on, on how old it is?
I don't know specifically, it's more than ten years and it is in our plan to evaluate, uh, replacing it with a more modern system. But it is quite old, but it works, so.
Do you, when you said in the plan, do you know when or approximately when or how soon?
I do not, I would have to defer to, uh, uh, Mr. Bingham and I don't believe he's online with us tonight.
Yeah, let us know.
Yep, I will.
And then one last question and I'll wrap it up, but, um, I was curious if someone isn't familiar or like a lot of people who can't download the app. To, you know, get to know the CRM, what other steps are, are available for them or who should they call?
Yes, uh, so they can just call Public Works direct, directly. And our admin staff will actually put the, um, residence request into the CRM system.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Noble, you have additional comments?
I do, thank you. Okay, um, my question is this, what about, uh. Roundabouts or traffic circles in some of these newer developments, some of the problems are, are these, uh. Runways that, uh, people just tend to speed down, I know that, uh, South One has a problem where, uh, and. Lot of people have complained about that and I don't know the status of the work regarding any studies in that area, but, um. The last time I checked on it, there was a question about whether it was too expensive, but I think that would be something that would be important to ask. Of developers if it, or, yes, of developers in case it ha- helps with, um. Reducing speeds and risks for kids running around.
So, Councilwoman Noble, that, that is something that, um, we've kind of talked about internally, I, as you know, I'm relatively new to the city. About two years, but, um, I think as we laid out some of our subdivisions in the past, we should have been considering some additional traffic calming. In the, in those neighborhoods, so I guess moving forward, I think we want to try to see more roundabouts to. Kind of break up those long runways, as you call them, you know, or, you know, maybe do put some neck downs within the neighborhood. Um, that is something we're considering as the newer developments come in, but, uh, obviously we have a, a ton of developments already happened. And, you know, we do have these long runways, so.
We'll have to figure out a way to balance those, or at least you will, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council, Councilmember Hurst?
Just quick one, uh, if you can explain to us really quickly why. Traffic calming may not be an option in some areas, can, and I guess where, what I'm trying to get at is. How does something like a speed bump affect a plowing operation on a main like bus route? Um, one of the primary, uh, routes, how, how does that affect it and why is it so tough to get traffic calming in one of those routes?
Yes, uh, thank you for the question, so we do try to keep, um, traffic calming off of collective roads and we would never put them on. Say an arterial road, right, um, but we also try to keep them off of priority two and priority one snow routes. Because as you said, as if you put speed bumps on them, it slows, uh, the ability to be able to remove the snow. And also we don't want to put them on emergency routes, so we won't, don't want to delay emergency response through the city either, so. Those are things that we take into consideration and that, that's one of the reasons we run our solutions through. The police department, the fire department, the school district, and then our own street, uh, maintenance division.
Yeah, I, I, you know, within the last two years, I've gotten a really interesting perspective of getting into a snowplow, uh, in the middle of the night. And it's, you know, any significant amount of snow, anything more than two or three inches, everything like disappears and. You know, we hear about curbs being torn up and things being hit and it's pretty easy to do, even if you're pretty familiar with the route. And so that, that to me, you know, kind of highlights, you put a bump in the middle of the road, even if you know that it's coming pretty soon. Uh, your efficiency and just tearing up the, the bottom of the blade and having to replace it so constantly. Uh, which comes at a significant cost, um, is something to take into consideration as well when we're talking about, you know, just the challenges. Of some of the, the traffic calming device, the normal operations for snow removal.
Are there any other questions or comments from council regarding the traffic calming policy? Now we'll move on to the third and final presentation, which is large vehicle parking, would like to invite Quinn Nichols, Chief of Police and Robert Shadley, City Attorney, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman and council, uh, this presentation's a bit longer and I expect we'll have more discussion. Um, it is following up on the discussion back in November, um, at which council decided to move the. The large vehicle parking issue to a separate discussion, um, that focused on work trucks, um. The tenor of this discussion involves not talking about work trucks and you'll see why, and so hopefully this proposal helps, um. And gives you a place to talk from, um, and we'll look forward to any feedback you have and, and we'll try and then craft an ordinance around what policy direction. And policy consensus we get tonight, um, to deal with all the various moving parts, um, so I am driving this boat, uh, the chief is available for enforcement. Questions as well, so Dylan, if you could bring up the presentation, please.
Thank you, and the first slide. Um, currently, the, um. Law exists as you can generally park for seventy-two hours, uh, vehicles, trailers under thirty feet can park under, in front of an owner's residence. If it's operational, registered, et cetera, um, it, there's no debris accumulating before it's considered abandoned and subject to towing. Um, and then there's the general parking restrictions in the code that we've amended, uh, by adopting the model traffic code. And that's, everybody knows the five-hour rule in residential districts, if it's in front of your own home, um, then it can remain there. Um, and otherwise it's subject to ticketing, that rule was continued through the ordinance that was, uh, adopted on second reading at the last council meeting. So that's the framework that we're starting from, um, as far as what problem we're trying to solve, so next slide, please. What we presented is a simplified parking concept, because if we make this too complex, it. Ignores law enforcement realities, um, and I know that council's consensus has to, uh, deal with varying. Um, inputs from the community, different, um, sections of the community physically, um, from the way the area was built and the way it's currently used. And so what we've come up with is essentially just a blanket prohibition. Um, but don't be scared by the prohibition because we have exemptions and, um, we'll get into that, so we will prohibit what we're gonna call large vehicles. Recreational vehicles and utility trailers, um, we're not talking about work trucks though, because we're focusing on the type and size of vehicle. As opposed to the potential use, um, it's not citywide, it's only in residential zone districts and adjacent to residences in other districts. So not on all streets, which means, um, vehicles could park elsewhere in the city and just be subject to the other standard parking rules. And then the next, uh, area to pay attention to before we get into what does this mean in large vehicles, it are the exemptions. And they're limited exemptions, um, that are on the next slide here. And so these are meant to accommodate those scenarios where. You want to make sure you don't negatively impact something that has to happen, um, for people to live in the community, right, and expectations. Uh, we heard a general resistance to prohibiting recreational vehicles, um, and trailers because of the need to conduct work. Or to offload, unload, cool your, um, whatever equipment in, in the RV needs to cool over a period of time. And so that has to be balanced with the police department's ability to, um, actually enforce a law here. Um, and so fewer specific time limits are, are valid, uh, are, are helpful to doing that. Um, and so what we've done is created exemptions that a large, an RV can park in a residential area up to forty-eight hours over a seven-day period. For those limited purposes and it has to be moved after that, I apologize for the, the typo there, um, for at least seventy-two hours. Uh, things that are difficult to enforce, but we have to have some objective standards, the occupancy item is carried over from existing city law. Um, that if an RV is, is parked on the street, that it, it cannot be occupied, um, well, let me take that back, that's a finer point. But it is, um, about parking in front of your own home, that exception, um, there is an exemption for government vehicles, uh, for delivery vehicles. While making deliveries, um, vehicles that are used in construction adjacent to the parking location from six thirty to six PM. Which is fairly restrictive, um, as far as location, because it has to be a- adjacent to it. Um, or maybe it's on the street, I'd have to look at the exact language, but the idea is that vehicles, uh, especially when people are away from home. Um, for, for work, that, um, if they're parked next to that area, then the vehicle can stay there, but after that time, they'd have to move. Vehicles stopped for emergency repairs, vehicles during utility or street construction. And then large vehicles that will get into the definition of during active loading and unloading, or if you have a license or a permit from the city. To do so, um, under other provisions of the code and we'll, we'll get to those in a moment, so these vehicles would be able to park. Um, and not permanently, sometimes subject to the, the limit that we've put here, um, next slide, please. So those exemptions have to be remembered as we're looking at the blanket prohibition, where we're just touching residential streets and those. Adjacent to residences, as I said before, there are existing rules for non-residential areas, um, where there are general parking standards and, and rules on. Abandonment of the vehicles, so keep that in mind if, if you're concerned that we are, um, under-regulating perhaps, next slide, please, Dylan. So, a large vehicle is, um. Avoiding, as I said, the concept of what is a work truck, um, because you have an officer on the street or residents who are concerned about something and you, you don't know what the specific use is. If we try to overdefine what a work truck is, it becomes far, far more confusing, um, than it would provide value. And so we already have some existing restrictions that you should be aware of. The first is that a vehicle with a gross weight over eight thousand pounds, which I understand may be difficult to determine, um, from a law enforcement perspective on the street. Um, are generally prohibited in residential areas, uh, there are some exceptions that are linked to here, um, and then. Unattached semi-trailers are generally prohibited on streets, so if you see a, a trailer that would normally be linked to a, um, a truck tractor. Um, those are generally prohibited to remain parked on the streets without a, a truck attached. Um, and so coming down to the actual definition, what we would prohibit in a residential area is a trailer as defined in the model traffic code. And we can walk through each of those if desired, a truck tractor or semi-trailer that is, uh, laden or unladen. That is a model traffic code definition, this couldn't be in a residential district, um, unless it fits one of the. Exceptions for active loading and unloading, a tow truck or a vehicle equipped to provide towing services. Uh, that one may be overbroad, honestly, that is a category, uh, borrowed from Brighton's, um, parking restrictions. But if something is not actively engaged in its work, it perhaps shouldn't be located in a residential area. A farm tractor, a bus, construction equipment shouldn't be left on the street, um, unless there is potentially a permit for it. And then the, the one that hopefully will address council's concern is any other vehicle that is over twenty-five feet or three hundred inches in length. Um, that would accommodate, I believe, your standard Amazon delivery truck, although delivery trucks would be exempted. Um, a number of RVs, um, well, excuse me, even though we already addressed RVs, larger vehicles that are, that are over twenty-five feet. Uh, hopefully would be, um. Not something that would run afoul of the needs of people who work in the community and have multiple trucks or multiple vehicles. Uh, we don't want to, council didn't seem to want to inhibit those individuals from being able to park, uh, within the community, and so, uh, with that. Distance, that length requirement seemed to be the most easily enforceable standard that hopefully would not affect that. And so we can hit the next slide, uh, please, really quickly, I know this is a lot of definitions and links, that's, um. The model traffic code is like that, Mr. Hurst may be able to attest to the, um, the level of detail that it goes into in describing vehicles. Um, this is a comprehensive, as comprehensive of a definition of a recreational vehicle that I could find, I have included watercraft. As well as off-highway vehicles to be, um, comprehensive in that. And then finally on the last slide, um, the utility trailer is the last category of vehicle, which is essentially an un-motorized, um, wheeled. Trailer under two thousand pounds and that is a model traffic code, um, definition. That is a lot of information, I'm happy to go back over anything, um, this is a proposal for council to consider, so we welcome any feedback and. Look forward to hearing what you all would like to move forward with, thank you.
Are there any questions for staff regarding this item? Councilmember Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Robert, um, I do have a couple, um, so with enforcement, you know, looking at this. Um, like construction equipment, I mean, I've dr- driven around the core city especially and you see bobcats parked. In residential trailers, flat trailers. Covered trailers where they have a construction. With enforcement, do the police enforce this or code enforcement?
Parking is, well, Chief, you can answer. Parking is currently vested in the police department. Code enforcement has, I believe, some authority under our code to enforce parking violations. But structurally, it's not set up that way, and there may be other complications under state law.
And then we did talk about work trucks. What about snowplows? There's a lot of own businesses that have three or four. Just on a Ford one fifty, they put a snowplow on it. And and don't get me wrong. I think when it snows, that's how they're making their money. But when it's not, they're parked in the street. I know of a couple neighborhoods that have three or four. Where would that be in?
Those. So the tenor of the conversation was was previously was not to over regulate such vehicles. Because as you delve into dividing and chopping things into. Smaller bits, it makes enforcement and understandability more difficult. So I believe those would be permitted here in a, as long as it sticks within a. The length limit. Unless it were added as another prohibited item, a truck with an attachment like that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hurst.
Yeah, I like a lot of the language in this. It's not too limiting, but. Even as Councilman Guardiola was just going into. I I'm not opposed to multiple. Vehicle. Like. If somebody drives home their work truck. And that's their mode of transportation. I I'm not sure we should stop them from driving home their work truck. I mean, depending on the size, right? But. If it's just a general truck, I don't I don't see a problem with that being in your neighborhood. I mean, you know, a lot of driveways are filled with that. But when you have a transportation relying. Business such as snowplows, such as. Maybe a multi vehicle landscaping company, things like that. When you start getting into a fleet like three or more. Then I believe it's time to find a location for secure parking. But. You know, the the one work truck in someone's driveway, I think that is can be used as a work truck, a family truck. All you know, it could go get groceries after work. You never know. And so. Really, that would be my only suggestion is. You know, I don't want us to be counter to supporting small businesses. Of course, we, you know, we support. The tradesmen that's out there doing work and, you know, they're driving their truck as as their primary vehicle. But at the same time, kind of like Councilman Guardiola was getting at is can't have a fleet of vehicles parked in the residential area. You know, and then kind of hide under the small business protection idea. Because at a certain point, once you've grown your business, you you have to be able to secure those assets. And so. You know, that that's just my two cents. Otherwise, I think. You know, it's going to be hard. The only other perspective I would I would gain is like, or that I'd like to add is. From a semi truck perspective, it is also a small business. Most likely, if you're a single truck. Owner, that is your office inside your truck is your office. You might have something small set up at your home. But if you're sick or you. Work into your schedule, you know, four or five days of home time, home time, you. You don't usually have anywhere. Like a physical location because you're constantly on the road. So the lack of. Affordable. Parking for for that type of business to me is not a commerce city issue. That is a. You know. Nationwide issue, if you will, it's been considered the number one issue in the in the country for trucking is truck parking. And so. Just with the lack of amenities. Focused on trucks that may not be, you know, that need to have long term parking for an affordable rate. Because there's not that anywhere in the metro area, it's hard for me to. Take a hard line against somebody who's just trying to safely park their vehicle while they're having some home time. That that's really been my only pushback. I completely understand not wanting to have them in your neighborhood. It's just trying to understand the perspective. Of someone just trying to do their job. And and safely protect the asset that's, you know, primary to getting their job done. And so. There's there's no, there's no misunderstanding on my part that it's not, it's not nice to have that, you know, blocking your driveway or anything like that. I just want to make sure we add that perspective because. Although that may be very few in our community, there's still people out there trying to do that and balance, you know, not having the purchase or rent a site for them to park their truck. Because they got sick and have to have five days of home time or something like that. And so. That was really my biggest interjection on how it was before is because. When we start getting and trying to regulate everything, trust me, I I've learned my lesson several times that you'll never think of everything. When you're trying to regulate a vehicle. And so. Just don't want us to put ourselves in a hole and also recognize that we are we are pro business, small business growth in Commerce City, and we just have to. Make sure we're we're considering those perspectives on that small trucking owner when they're when we're kicking them out of the neighborhood.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you. Where would food trucks fall on this?
A food truck that is parked and not operating, I presume, here?
Yes, you know, if you if you take your truck out at two o'clock and work until ten, but it's there. Otherwise.
Sure. It's over eight thousand pounds.
That's that would potentially be it. It would be prohibited if it's over eight thousand pounds, and we can determine that. And it I assume it would be would be require a. Transportation permit from the public works department or would have to be providing services there. And then depending on the length, a food truck could potentially be over twenty five feet. And then if it's a food truck that's actually a trailer, if it's not attached to something again, it's subject then to the. Various weight limits. And otherwise would fit. Another definition of trailer, I believe.
So you're saying a food truck would require a transportation permit as well?
If it is over eight thousand pounds, it should be prohibited in a residential area without a without a permit. Yes.
Okay, all right, that would be good because that's one of the complaints. Is food trucks in residential areas. So as long as this addresses that issue, that would be good. With regards to other kind of equipment. Let's say it's a tractor or something like that. If it can't be driven on a city street, then it shouldn't be in a residential area.
I am not familiar with the the chief may may pipe in on the ability to drive a tractor. I presume you. You know that they're they're not permitted to be driven on streets. I do not know that, though.
That there are some exemptions related to that. If they're making a delivery, you're getting a. I can't imagine what, I don't know. Conex box delivered because you're moving, then they may be permitted to drive upon streets, but they have to immediately leave the area. So. It isn't a blanket. They can't operate on the streets ever.
So if you have, oh, oh, sorry, I apologize. I jumped in.
No, I was gonna say that answers your question.
Okay, it let's say so somebody has keeps the tractor on their property when they're not using it for work. Would that be? allowable? Do we is? Does this affect private property or only public?
So we're discussing only public streets with this ordinance. There's a separate ordinance about oversized vehicles on. On private property, and it's not permitted in residential areas typically over a certain weight, I believe, unless. Unless there's a permit issued.
Okay, and. What about requiring that no vehicles be parked in residential areas? That require a commercial license to drive?
If that is a category, I don't know, Chief, if there is a readily accessible. List for officers when enforcing to determine if a vehicle requires a commercial driver's license. Or if it would be fall within the other categories we have here, including truck tractors. I don't know what else would require a CDL.
I'd have to do some research on that. I'm not dumb. I don't know off the top of my head.
Three definitions, ten thousand one pounds for a CDL or air brakes and. Everything with air brakes is over ten thousand pounds these days. So all of it's not qualified in the first place because the eight thousand pound limit.
Okay, I have residents who, unlike. I know Councilmember Hurst is has a very deep affinity for the trucking industry and through his work with CDOT. But I have residents who don't want rigs or I don't know what they would you call them, the cab? For the semi truck. The front part.
Tractor is probably the.
The tractor parked in the residential area.
We are in this ordinance specifically calling those out as a large vehicle. In any of its forms.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I have several concerns as well, especially with being residents being able to bring a. Working vehicle. Home, especially every night, because in the core of the city, this is a serious concern. We don't have HOAs. And it is very nerve wracking when you have a neighbor that has to pull, say. A large vehicle in front of his home nightly, and they can't even either see across the street or if it's in their driveway. They can't even, you know, protect their neighborhood because they can't see it because of someone's working vehicle. So. I don't think it's we're kicking them out of the city, but it's not allowed. In the north part of the city, so I think it does need to be contained. And yes, I'm not against anyone making a living, but. It's it needs to be looked into and stopped. And then if we start allowing them a permit. And even with food trucks to get a permit. How long and will their permits continue? Because, you know, just like, say, a food truck, you can't even look at your neighbors if it's parked in their driveway or across the street. Another concern I have on slideshow slide number five. Does staff have a map that eventually they could give them to the mayor and other city council members? To see what they consider as residential zoned areas? Is that available?
I don't believe it's strictly available. Any area with a residential zone. Apply applicable to it, any PUD area that has a residential use. And then any and then there's also any any other zone district. There are some industrial, I believe, and certainly agricultural properties that have. Residences on it. It would also apply then in commercial or mixed use areas. One of the Greyhound Park is a good example of this. We're going to have tighter streets. Somewhat tighter streets, I believe, with more dense housing. So you'll want to consider that as residential as well.
Because, you know, this is something I feel like we're not even enforcing currently, and it's a serious concern from. Fifty sixth Avenue. And Holly going all the way down to Sixtieth Avenue in Holly. And right across the street is the Holly Park Apartments, which is technically considered residential. House or residential area, I believe, but yet there's several semi trailers parked along that road. Within the public right of way, and there's even signs there that says no parking, but they're still parked there. So. You know, how are we going to address this? Because businesses are already disrespecting and ignoring these signs. So. You know, this is a concern because we already have the no parking signs there and we're still letting them park there. Does anyone have an answer for that?
I do not. I cannot speak to enforcement. I have the focus of this was to present the structure of the law. I know enforcement is another question that the chief was going to bring back at a later date about enforcement options.
Yes, ma'am, I will tell you that is that is one of our areas that we do pay attention to. We do have some problems with our vendor being able to tow large vehicles. His lot is only so big. And he requires advanced notice to do that. So even if we were tonight to go out there and find a. Forty foot RV, it may take him up to three days to clear space on his lot before he can come and get it. So it isn't as simple as we discover it, we make a phone call and they tow it within the hour. It does take a little bit of time. And unfortunately, Commerce City is a. We have probably the biggest, we're plagued with large vehicles on our residential streets.
Okay, yeah, and I realize this is a concern, but you know, after thirty days. Or after two to three weeks, the same things are right back there and there's no consistency to follow up and make sure. Is it back or did the same thing occur? So, you know, I I recall also at a previous meeting, the mayor and other city council approved. To hire an outside company to assist and help with enforcement as well. So is there an update on that?
Yes, ma'am, we I don't recall there was a request to hire a because that would require us to do a. RFP. I don't. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't remember. I was going to provide some information back to council about. Private contractors that would come in and do parking, but we did not do anything as it relates to contract or to bring that before council. We were just collecting information.
Oh, I I do hope that is looked into because we keep hearing there's not enough staff or. Or this company doesn't have enough space. So maybe even explore the option of getting someone else, another company to assist with the towing. Because like I said, this is a serious concern in the core of the city. Staff is doing a good job. But in two to three weeks, the things are the same. Residents living in those Holly Park apartment shouldn't have to. Look across the street and see a semi park when they should or semi trailer when they should be able to see pie in their park. Another concern that I have. Is does the city have signs throughout the city that says there should not be any vehicles over eight eight thousand pounds in residential districts?
That I'm not certain about. I don't think that they randomly place them up. I believe they go in certain hotspots, but that would be a question for PW.
Because I'd like to know that as well and get an update because if not, then when can we get those? Because. You know, maybe that would help with the situation as well.
They have those long truck routes, like in my neighborhood, they have them. They don't have much, to be honest.
Yeah, because like you said, exactly along, you know, that area and then along Sat Brothers. It's even more horrible. The city has no parking signs. But yet, if you go over by Sat Brothers Truck Stop. There is several semi trailers there that are totally just ignoring it. So like I said, it's a, I just can't stress enough. This is a serious. Problem in the core of the city. So thank you.
Councilmember Hurst, do you have additional comments?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, just a couple clarifying things. So. I too understand that we don't want some eyes under there. So I don't want that to be misconstrued. I just want to make sure that we are. Addressing the perspective that similar to the to the dog issue. Or the vicious animal issue of not having tall enough fences to contain, you know, pretty athletic animals. Be great to get every semi track and every trailer out of our neighborhoods. But without a solution anywhere in the state. It's tough for me to, you know, completely jump on board that that's a feasible. Solution or that's actually going to happen because. We're going to have to. You know, find five companies with large tow yards to be able to sustain the rate in which we would have to tow vehicles for for violating that. I'm not suggesting we don't make rules and don't make laws. It's just going to be very hard to enforce because of the situation. I I have. If anything, the most knowledge about something like this, I'm on a national team with six other people studying this. For the National Transportation Research Board right now, and. It is significantly tough. To find those kind of locations. And so. I understand it's an issue in our community. I just want to make sure we're highlighting that it's not an issue that someone's. Necessarily throwing, you know. Throwing all laws out and, you know, trying to be a rebel. They're simply trying to find a safe spot to park because there really isn't any. And one of the the key places to see that is in Commerce City or in Stapleton. At Northfield Shopping Center, look at the the road next to Bass Pro Shops. I mean. That's highlighted in truck nationwide truck data as a place to park because there's just not enough spots in the metro area. So. It it's it's a problem that goes far beyond Commerce City's borders. I think it's something regionally that that should be looked at on getting in front and. Creating solutions in land development code. But again, I just want to make sure that that perspective is shared, but it's not lost on me that. You know, a semi trailer blocking the view of the park you live across the street from is is not necessarily what you want to wake up to. So. I can appreciate that. I just want to make sure all sides are appreciated.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would echo a lot of what Councilmember Hearst just said. That was a lot of what was on my mind. I I like the direction of this presentation. I think it covers a lot of the problems and the 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 questions that have come up. But I was just curious. This might be a silly idea, but have we considered as a city building a place for these trucks to park and offering permits to use it? It just seems like rather than trying to tow over and over and over again, why not make a solution for them? Because we do seem to have an unusually high number of people in the trucking industry living in our community. Why not build a solution for them as opposed to continuing to ticket or tow?
I am not familiar with that being discussed at any point. But they don't tend to bring the lawyer into those conversations.
No, that's fair enough. I just I'd like to propose to our council that we have a conversation around that. And if it's a feasible option that we look at creating something like that.
So I don't want to step on anybody's toes. I'm sorry, but I think there's going to be options for us to learn from another municipality that is not far from a neighbor of ours in the very near future. I I in the middle of getting a project off the ground, we'll do exactly what you're talking about, Councilwoman Grimes. And that's a statewide approach that we're trying to learn how to replicate that process. But land development code and including me, the not in my backyard attitude of I'm not putting a truck stop in my backyard. It's very hard to get get passed. There's no safe truck parking except out there on the whole I-70 quarter. But good luck getting any community wanting truck parking there when it's even though it's highly necessitated. So it it's a tough issue to to find a location that suits everybody's needs and is also close enough to the businesses where this actually is utilized in the in the fashion that we all want to see it utilized, you know, taking taking parked trucks and vehicles off of the city streets into this parking lot. We'll have to have almost a perfect location for that to happen. And so you know, finding that in the middle of the core city with enough space to be able to take that on is going to be challenging. And of course, I would love to work on that, but I just we have to be realistic as why it's not done already because it's a great idea. It's just easy to get shot down as you start working through all the hurdles that you have to get over as you work towards that solution.
Yeah, no, I I totally appreciate that perspective, Councilmember Hearst, and certainly agree that no one wants a truck stop per stay in their backyard. Just seems like we have a lot of industrial areas in the the city anyhow, or even maybe in future growth areas. Just away from residential. Just it seems like an idea that we should at least consider. And I like to hear that it sounds like someone else is going to tackle this issue. An idea and maybe we do learn from that in the process, but just wanted to put it out there as an idea because it seems like we're all in favor of keeping these types of vehicles out of our neighborhoods and off of, you know, residential streets. But it isn't particularly fair to prohibit them to park in front of their home if there's nowhere else for them to park, right? So it just it seems like we can't create a problem without offering a solution, in my opinion.
Councilmember Wadiola, you have additional comments?
Yeah, for staff, when we talk about license or permit, what 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 qualifies a person to get a license or permit to park? What kind of permits do we allow? I recently spoke with the resident and they said that an officer told them that they could apply for permit for his trucks.
Sure. So each anywhere the code refers to a permit for parking, I believe, or use, the department should maintain that the department that administers the permit would should maintain a set of standards for those for granting those permits or application materials for that. I don't know what those are specifically. The oversized parking in residential areas, I believe, goes through community development. The Public Works may administer overweight permits and transportation permits. But I don't know that would apply to somebody parking an oversized vehicle over 8,000 pounds specifically is just their presence in the neighborhood. And so each of those comes down to, again, well, our prior discussion on rulemaking authority. Those should have consistent standards for that, what what it takes to get a permit. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Noble, you have additional comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rather than focus on towing, I think that ticketing works. There was a trailer that was parked just north of Chambers that had a ticket on it, but it was so old that it faded out. So I'm not sure whether what's done to make certain that people actually pay their tickets or pay their fines, respond in some fashion. I think that the parking regulations are not going to make everyone happy. And there's going to be people, even even those who don't own trailer rigs who aren't going to be happy because they have more cars than fit in their driveways in front of their homes. And we have already passed regulations that are going to impact them. Everybody is going to be hurt in some fashion and we're going to probably hear more comments about parking than maybe we have heard to date. I also think that there's plenty of other uses for land that Commerce City could put to use. There may be, you know, we're we're looking at the possibility of people being uprooted from their homes. We are going to be stopping RVs from being used as homes. And maybe there should be lots for RVs where people need need to be able to find a home as well. So we shouldn't necessarily consider the the rig, the only issue that requires addressing by this city council. And finally, I just hope that the things that have mattered to the people in my ward are addressed. And that includes food trucks, the cabs to tractor trailers and trailers just sitting out. And RVs that have stayed for quite a while. Sometimes as long as 30 days at their house. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Hearst, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wrote down notes that I didn't get all the way through on my last topic. So I apologize. I just also want to make clear that just because there's HOAs in the North Side doesn't mean there's not parking issues. There's significant parking issues as Councilwoman Noble just talked about. And one of the things that that is facing the North that I'm not sure because of the situation in the South, it's not quite the same, but I know for a fact I've had experience with a box truck that is definitely not over 25 feet long. But is over 8,000 pounds. What they'll do is they'll park in the driveway for two days, they'll park in the street for two days, they'll park in the driveway, you know, and then if if the metro district comes after them, then they pull onto a public property where they can't do anything. And then if the police come after them, they pull into the driveway where the metro district will wait 72 hours to do anything. And vice versa. And, you know, it's never 72 hours because the metro district inspector is not there every day. And so it just becomes a game where the neighbors are frustrated because you can call both sides of enforcement, you know, the the HOA rules or the the, you know, for from that side of the enforcement or the police officer and the, you know, the police, anytime a police officer shows up, they're doing their job. They're following the rules. And so it's just are we back in another tough situation after this? And that's why I think enforcing the 8,000 and above, it's going to be painful to some people for sure. But at least has to be a good starting point is if we're vocal about the new enforcement of that. I think that's still, I'm not sure if the mayor can tell us, but he's got a large truck that should fit that that wouldn't be disqualified from being in the neighborhood. And I think he he gets his trucks about the limit of people's like personal use trucks. And so that's we considered that when we talked about this in our neighborhood, it's the same thing is how do you enforce something like this? Because like Mayor Hughesman's truck is pretty large, but the guy who is work truck with ladders on top is weighs less and is smaller. You know, it it's a tough one to really enforce because of that. And that's why I say when I'm talking about work trucks and then kind of falling inside this large truck definition where they where they won't be excluded. To me seems the best moving forward. Unless we can put some type of language in there that limits like a fleet of trucks. And so, you know, I'm not opposed to an F-150 or a Chevy 2500. As long as we're not getting into like a 450 and above, that's getting into some more serious movement of goods. The only other thing, you know, that I would say you know, is without addressing the underlying issues. You know, we're going to start seeing some some other alternative things pop up that we're going to have to handle from time to time. Like if I'm a tow truck operator on a 24 hour shift and I want to stop at home to get, you know, a snack until my next call, are we are we running into a situation on over regulating there? And and I'm just saying, we got to be prepared for those things. It's not like those aren't solvable. But again, we can't regulate every situation. I I know we're we're not casting a wide enough net for that. So we can't go into this expecting it to operate perfectly either because there's going to be a lot of gray area that'll have to be defined as we go.
Mr. Sheasley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch on a few comments that were made to see if I can clarify. Just have a brief list. I'm sure there are plenty more people to to share. Mr. Hearst, you'd raised a concern about fleets and three or more. I think we need to remember this ordinance would apply in conjunction with the other ordinance that has the five hour parking limited if you're not in front of your own home. So from an enforcement perspective, identifying a fleet owned by one particular person, unless they're putting a surveillance unit on it or doing some investigative work would be hard to determine. So I haven't spoken with the police department about that, but I think that would be a very a difficult thing to to do if we're looking at simplifying enforcement. I will follow up on the food truck question to make sure that assuming people would want to address this and incorporate this if we decide to move forward and make sure that the public works permit on gross weight is something that is applied and whether we need to incorporate that. The police department did identify an issue with regulating vehicles in this way based on gross weight. I don't know, and maybe Mr. Hurst could tell us that is there, there's not an easily identifiable way to know a vehicle's gross weight. Unless it's very clearly over, unless it's a certain type of vehicle, but a vehicle that has a that implements on it may have a higher gross weight. But the officer or enforcing agent is not really going to know that in the field.
You check license and registration. It's on the registration card.
It would be on the registration. Okay. And then oh, this ordinance does not address occupancy of RVs, except while an RV is part for loading and unloading for those limited purposes in a residential district. The the feeling I got from council last time was overextending to prohibit occupancy of RVs on city streets is not wasn't something that council wanted to pursue. And so that is not incorporated in this ordinance. I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for staff regarding this item? Okay, I do have some. Councilmember Hearst.
I'm sorry, that last comment raised a question with me. And I think, Robert, you were maybe referring to at least one comment that was made was from me is, you know, in the same meeting we discussed being able to live on the street homeless on private property without you know, us stopping you from doing so. And then later in the meeting, we talked about it being illegal to park in your camper on private on public property. And we just, I I just thought that was pretty ironic that you're allowed to sleep outside, but not, you know, inside of a vehicle. And I don't get me wrong, and I understand why, but it on a case by case basis, how would we approach that? Right? So if the if the situation is, you know, if it's most of the other or if it's all the other categories to to be allowed inside the wherever location that we're talking about, you know, on a public road, but there's someone sleeping inside of it and be you know, the officer says that that's their only choice, you know, they don't really have a another situation to go to. What's our approach then? I guess would be, and that might be a whole nother discussion. I just want to make sure that that's not getting lost in this, you know?
Yes. So so it is at this point, I believe it came became a whole other discussion, the way that the the discussion went and in your comment was one, but I I heard it from other council members. And that taken in conjunction with not wanting to with wanting to focus on residential areas and not citywide parking. And so limiting this conversation to solving those parking problems in residential districts. If we wanted to address occupancy of RVs, I I do think that is a separate conversation. It may be important for council to have. Some communities recently have prohibited that. But I think it's a conversation with different inputs and impacts from the aesthetic qualities of neighborhoods, how people park in front of their own houses, whether people can go to work, et cetera. So that's that's why that's excised here.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Alan Thomas, you have additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to really clarify, you know, like I said, this is a concern because I don't understand too why we have city ordinances and and signs that already said, as I mentioned before, no parking in certain residential areas. So that's a concern if if we already have that ordinance. And then I want to specify it's the semi trailers. I don't know the correct wording, but they leave the whole truck, the semi truck there, but drive the truck away. So like I said, that's a big concern too, because then also in residential areas, they're pulling a flatbed trailers with the big tractors on there and just parking them everywhere as well. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes. Semi trailers are prohibited from being stored on public rights away except between, except on Elm Street between 69th and East 72nd Avenue, which was unpaved or if there's a portion of it that is unpaved. First, when that ordinance was written, when the model traffic code was adopted, that's that was carved out. But otherwise, semi trailers are prohibited from being parked on public rights away for either exchanging trailers or just not without being connected. And so as to enforcement of that, I think the chief spoke to the difficulty in in towing for sure, but I I don't know anything else about enforcement of that.
Because like I said, right there on East 60th Avenue in Holly by those Holly Park Apartments, some of those semis have been the the truck part or the bed part where they store the stuff has been there six months or longer. So like I said, I I hope that gets cleaned up soon because it's not for the residents, as I mentioned before, to have to continuously look at that because that is a residential area. So thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I do have some comments I'd like to make. First, thank you very much, Chief Nichols, your staff, as well as Robert, your staff. You guys did a phenomenal job putting this together. I think that the considerations and the concerns that have been expressed by council have been well addressed in this. My one concern would be on that 8,000 pound limit. I think you're going to cause a rift with a lot of people that don't pick up trucks. Mostly the people that own F-350s and 3500 Rams and 3500 Chevys, as well as anybody that owns a Ford F-450, which the weight on that dry is about 8,500 pounds. And then you had 50 gallons diesel fuel in there and you're over 9,000 pounds. So the 8,000 pound mark looks to be a little bit low for pickup trucks that are not commercially licensed, that are owned by private individuals who just live in these neighborhoods. And they are just a basic pickup truck that just happens to be larger than a Ford Ranger or an F-150. So I would, my preference would be to see that changed. The comment regarding not having an affordable place to park your tractor whenever you come home and you're on five days and everything. You know, I spend $65 a month to park my RV and I park it in a storage lot and I'm charging a base fee plus every foot additional as an additional cost and it's $65. And because it's not used for a business purpose, I don't even get to deduct that on my taxes. So if I were to be a tractor trailer operator or operator that has to drive across country and deliver goods and I thank them for all the work they're doing, especially during the global pandemic, you know, we have gotten by through the hard work of owner operators that have made those deliveries and gotten material across the country as we needed. But when you come home, there's no reason why you can't store that same tractor or tractor trailer in a storage lot and pay $65 a month and then write that off your taxes. Um, I have grave concern over the city operating a parking lot and then having permits in there. And then what happens whenever people break into it? What happens when we have people living there? And everything else that is uh, associated with uh, whenever you have areas that. Um, I do know that uh, the J.J. Appelhans, who owns Monaco Lumber, has a yard down there, a hundred and fourth avenue where he allows people to store trucks and everything like that. So there are options out there in the community for people to store their vehicles. Yes, it costs a little bit of money, but again, that's a tax write-off that goes out there. Um, so those are, uh, I think, uh, some uh, well-thought-out um, things that you guys put into the ordinance. And I look forward to that coming forward for a vote because this is a huge issue. And I think that it's a very divisive issue within the neighborhoods. And you even see whenever somebody is complaining regarding, uh, you know, somebody parking a semi-truck and the hate and the backlash that comes back towards that individual for expressing why he doesn't want to see that in his neighborhood. And uh, you know, some of these individuals that are complaining are business owners themselves. And uh, you know, but they don't bring their stuff home and park it in front of their house because they're trying to be respectful for their neighbors as well. Um, so it's a divisive issue that I think that hopefully having a well-rounded ordinance like this can address. Um, one thing I would like, uh, chief, if you could address, I know a lot of people complain up the Shell Station there, Hundred and Twentieth and Chambers. There are trucks that park up there, and I know that you guys have gone out and looked at it. And those are actually parked on private property. And uh, anytime that I'm driving through the city, I notice whenever you have a green uh, street sign that has the name of the street, that is usually city property, but when you have a blue street sign, that means that it is private property. Can you explain that a little bit more so that residents who are watching can understand whenever they see vehicles parked? They can look at that street sign and determine whether or not it's on private property or public property?
You just explained it perfectly. If it is a green sign, it generally is a public right-of-way. If it is a blue sign, it is privately owned and it's considered private property, and therefore the police have no authority over it. Uh, now code enforcement can go out there and deal with the property owner. If there are some pressing issues around it, um, trying to think of a few that we dealt with in the last, but they gotta be more than just parking your vehicles on it. So that's sort of the issue. That area is also, it's a weird intersection. Part of that intersection belongs to Brighton, some of it belongs to Adams County. So our authority is only in Commerce City.
Thank you. I was uh, cluing you in on that just to make sure that I didn't misspeak whenever I made a comment regarding the two different color street signs. But I do think again, for residents, whenever you're looking at that and saying, how come this vehicle is parked here? If you see that blue sign, then it's on private property and that's up to the property owner whether or not they're going to allow that or not allow that. And I know the uh, property immediately adjacent to that Shell Station gets a lot of attention because the semis that do park up there. So again, uh, thank you very much for all the work that you put in this ordinance. I really do think that you guys have thought that out. I love the RV pro, provisions that uh, have the forty-eight hour limit within uh, um, the seven-day period. I think that's great. I think that's well thought out. Um, I definitely think that we need to focus on uh, addressing people living in RVs. Um, I know a lot of times you drive uh, mostly in the, in the southern part of the city, sometimes in the northern part of the city, even out by the dog park. You see RVs that are out there and the windows are, are drawn and people are sleeping out there. So, Councilwoman Noble, you have additional comments before we move on to reports?
I sure do. I'm so sorry, but you brought up something that got me confused. Um, so uh, Mr. Sheasley, I was, I thought I, I picked up from the earlier conversation that it's the zoning that impacts whether it's appropriate for that vehicle to be in that spot as opposed to whether it's public or private property that are, that are um, uh, parking, this parking ordinance would actually address uh, semis parked on someone's private property.
No, the intent of this ordinance is to address public right-of-way. So if it's city-owned street, the green sign, that would be public right-of-way. Um, if it is a different, if it is a privately-owned street or on someone's private property, and arguably even in some cases in a parking lot, there are different regulations that would apply as far as whether there's an approved surface. Um, we, we have the provision in the code and apologies, I'm, I'm glancing over to it now to see if I can see it quickly. In a residential area, a um, vehicle with over a one-ton carrying capacity excluding pickup trucks, RVs, motorhomes, travel trailers, sport utility vehicles. Those cannot be used on or adjacent to property that's used for residential purposes, meaning on, on private property. Um, whether it's zone residential or not, um, unless there's a city permit. But as far as parking on a private street, I don't exactly know where that would fall. There are approved service standard, surface standards. Um, there may be zoning standards that would apply as far as storage of vehicles. But under the parking regulations, they would not address that.
Okay, I would hope that zoning would um, would affect that, so that, just curious. Thank you.
Hey, thank you again on that presentation. And uh, next we move to reports. Mr. Tinklinburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, several things. Uh, one is that uh, we need a date from council where you all want to engage in the um, speed interviewing process with the city manager candidates. And uh, according to Scott, with the recruiting firm, that could be a weekday or a weekend, whatever you prefer. So think about that for a minute. It sounds like we have everyone's priority ranking for twenty-twenty-one, so thank you for that. And that will be, that follow-up session will be on the twenty-sixth after the uh, evaluation for the city attorney. And then uh, the other thing where we need action by council, the letter to CD-PHE regarding the Suncor permit. Um, as of Friday, we had one signature. Uh, we now have five of the nine signatures. And uh, that extend, that deadline has been extended to February seventeen, so we have a little time. But uh, everyone who wants their uh, signature on that letter, please get that into a net and so that we can affix it to the letter. And then uh, also have an answer to the question from Councilmember Alan Thomas earlier. Uh, the IT department will start looking at the CRM system uh, in the first quarter of this year. So it'll, but that's, you know, it'll take some analysis, so it'll be uh, some time before they actually get to it. So then back to the date for speed dating, I mean, speed interviewing the city manager candidates, when would you like to do that?
Uh, Mr. Tinklinburg, is it possible that staff could send out a doodle poll with some available times that would work? And then we can all uh, mark our availability on the doodle poll and then that'll set the date for us.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, for the update. Mr. Sheasley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to note, as we get to the February meeting, we don't, we don't have another regular meeting until February one. We have an executive sc, session planned for that night um, relating to airport matters. And then I have um, would like to discuss with council potential litigation on another matter that we've discussed previously. That agenda is getting pretty chock-full, um, so that one may need to run a little bit long if council's okay with that. Otherwise, there may be some need to, to come back. Um, just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Are there any council members wishing to make a report? Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, uh, this week I received an email from um, somebody representing the uh, Rotus proposal to purchase E-four-seventy. Um, there was a community meeting. They, they, this, this person started a group uh, called the E-four-seventy Citizens Advisory Committee, um, who held a meeting or maybe a series of meetings and then had a public meeting this week. Um, nothing on the position has changed. Then we, we voted on this twice for two se, you know, this council and the council, uh, the previous council both voted against this. Because nothing has changed, I'm not suggesting we bring this forward. Um, but I did want to, to make everybody aware of the solicitation. Um, I'm directing that solicitation to uh, the city manager and to see if Roger um, think there's any additional credence there, but if, if you guys are okay with that direction, um, I'll just direct them to the city manager because I, I just didn't see the need for us to bring them in to get them on the schedule to talk about something when there was no change in the direction from the one that we voted against. So unless anybody wants to make a motion, I'm gonna uh, just direct that person to Roger and uh, take that approach.
As a reminder, this is a study session and we do not make motions during study sessions. Thank you for the report. Councilmember Noble?
Uh, thanks very much. I participated in the Suncor listening session on uh, Thursday night. Um, I did uh, sign up to speak as well. I gave up my time because there were over a hundred people who had uh, signed up to speak. There was not enough time for everyone. There was a Suncor presentation that began the meeting and there just wasn't enough time for, for each speaker, unfortunately. Um, it was made clear by CD-PHE that the uh, permit, if you will, isn't in jeopardy. It can't be denied. It's what the um, what the group was told. But on the other hand, it appears that uh, Suncor might be wishing for some of the limits to be raised so that uh, they don't have as many exceedances perhaps. Um, I'm sure they'll be having more of these listening sessions. I had hoped uh, to have the letter, that the letter would be before them by Thursday, but uh, apparently not. So um, anyway, I did do that. Then, the other thing I did last week was to um, participate in a COGCC Commission meeting, um, which I haven't done since November of twenty-nineteen. It was a consent calendar item from extraction. It was nothing that we could uh, do anything about. It was uh, simply a drilling and spacing unit application that was moving forward under the consent calendar. I spoke to it only in terms of what is happening with regards to extraction in my ward and uh, not asking for anything, not asking them to do anything, didn't ask for them to remove it from, from the uh, consent calendar for discussion. Um, in the course of the discussion afterwards, a coun, a commissioner asked me if any of our oil and gas permits had been approved, and I said no. It turned out that uh, representation had been made in the permit application and in the hearing in which they were approved for the drilling and spacing unit, that we had in fact done so. So that meeting was postponed until uh, Wednesday. As you know, the uh, city has also responded and sent material to the COGCC as well uh, to address the representations that were made in the materials provided to the commissioners of the COGCC. Um, I think it was important that we did so because uh, extraction is wishing to be a partner with Commerce City and clearly we need um, a partners who um, are trustworthy and are providing accurate information to the commissioners. It was strictly coincidence that I happened to be there for that meeting because I just happened to look at agenda for the first time in fourteen months. Um, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up. I was there as an individual and I was not there representing the city council.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to give a quick update about the boards and commission subcommittee. We met Saturday all day and we filled uh, the new diverse, uh, Diversity and Inclusion uh, Commission. Uh, very, very strong applicants, um, great residents out there. Um, we also filled a couple of other ones, but um, that one will be full. Thank you.
Are there any other council members wishing to make a report?
Seeing none, I will proceed with mine. Um, last week, proceeding in the Metro Mayor Caucus meeting, uh, Governor Paulus was on the meeting and shared some more information regarding the state's uh, push to get uh, people vaccinated. And uh, looks like there's some changes coming forward with the vaccines that should allow people to get vaccinated on a little bit faster timetable. Um, also participated in the CCBPA meeting this morning. Um, not a lot, I guess, it was just happening, apologize. Uh, not a lot came out of that. It was more just a, a meeting just to check in and see how everybody was. Um, very happy to see that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee is going to be stood up and is fully ready to go. Um, we do not have a council meeting next week because of Martin Luther King Day. So the only thing I ask is that you take some time on that day to reflect on the sacrifice of Martin Luther King Junior, as well as uh, the fight for uh, equality and, and racial justice uh, throughout our country. And that is truly uh, an issue that we have struggled with, especially last year. And hopefully that uh, people taking time to kind of reflect on that will help to uh, move us in the right direction. And I'm proud of Commerce City for creating the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and uh, helping us in order to move in the right direction as well. So thank you for everybody that has participated in that. Um, with that being said, uh, that's the end of this meeting. So everybody have a good evening, have a good week. And we will see you for another study session on the twenty-fifth of January. Thank you much. Good night.